All right, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the council meeting of October 21st and October 28th, the community center commission meeting minutes from October 21st, utility commission minutes from October 23rd, planning commission from October 29th, telecom commission October 20th. There is also an exempt gambling permit from the Wyndham area health foundation. A raffle will take place on February 21st of 2026, and the regular bills.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have department heads. Are there any department heads that would like to speak right now? I'm sorry, I should quickly say that when you guys speak and when all of us too, I did have somebody mention that they would really appreciate if we made sure that the red light on our mic is on. Otherwise, you can't hear when they're watching it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Dan, City Department, Wyndham Net General Manager.
Dirk Abraham from the Telecom Commission.
And I just want to let the council know that on the Telecom Commission met on October 20th and motion second and passed five to zero, that would be do a public announcement number first, that data and video subscribers will have until December 12th of 2025 to decide and select new residential and data and/or streaming video service packages options. I decided subscribers or customers would be migrated to the nearest compatible option, new packages on December 31st. The traditional cable TV head end system that we currently have and the old residential data packages will be shut down on December 31st of 2025. This is all in line with being able to shut down the cable head end and the streaming video service package system that we have. Telecom Commission also met and reviewed and approved channel lineup, Southwest Stream Users Guide for the Roku and bill stuffer has been also sent out in the customers' bill. And we're working on getting additional more information on the website. So this basically is an app that you would download onto a device and there's certain devices that we need to have that are approved. For example, Roku Ultra or Roku Ultra LT would be the preferred items to use. Now, a great thing about this system is you don't pay, you buy the box, you don't rent it. We don't rent boxes. There's no rental set top boxes anymore. So once people switch over, they can do it themselves, bring in the set top boxes, equipment, return it back into City Hall so we can collect all those as people migrate off. We'll also have your favorite TV channels, Minneapolis and the Sioux Falls local channels as an option. Watch live TV, you can record shows, they have a cloud DVR, high definition quality restart TV, which you can rewind it back like up to 24 hours and be able to record. And if you already have a Roku Ultra or some of the other approved devices that you already own, then you're already set for the service. Instead, we're going to be rolling out some more information, send out media and radio and publications and get that out to everybody. As we build some of these other guides, we'll have those on too for the other devices. Right now, we're primarily at the Roku ones up and I'm working on the Fire TV is another one. Should also work on various models of the Apple, Amazon Fire TV, iOS systems and Android products. And then Dirk Abrams was going to make comment about a few things about the system.
All right, well, if you've seen recent copies of the Citizen, the Shopper, you may have seen a advertisement that was published in there by Southwest Minnesota Broadband. And very briefly here, I guess on behalf of the Telecom Commission, I just wanted to express a few thoughts about that and kind of walk you through where we are. Now, going back to, it was in October of 2024, the Telecom Commission was contacted by Southwest Minnesota Broadband. They asked to meet with us to discuss a possible merger or acquisition. That meeting was held in November of 2024. Now, at that meeting, we discussed a lot of things, but to be very clear, we discussed a possible merger or a possible acquisition whereby Southwest Minnesota Broadband would take over Wyndham Net and essentially assume, you know, control of the operations and management of the system. There was at least some discussion of financial details in that, including what would happen to the current Wyndham Net debt and so forth. So I'd say we talked about the financial aspect of that in general terms. But we also discussed other issues, including how, for instance, if there was a merger or acquisition, how customer service would be handled, staffing, billing, possibly having Wyndham have a seat or representative on the Southwest Broadband Board. We discussed some technical issues, potential changes that might be made to Wyndham Net Services and other financial issues. So again, this meeting was in November 2024. So for South Broadband to come out now in their ad and say that they had no idea that we were thinking of selling the system is, I would say it strains incredulity. I could say other things about it, but it would be less polite, but I'll try to stay away from that. But the Southwest Broadband advertisement, in my opinion, and speaking strictly for myself, I think there are aspects of it that are misleading and I think frankly, there's some aspects of it that are just not true. Now, let me point out a couple of other things here quickly, and I'll try to do this quickly. Again, October of 2024, Southwest Broadband came to us. They came to the Telecom Commission and they said they wanted to meet. You know, we didn't go to them, they came to us. So we held that meeting I've just gone through. Then in November of 2024, Federated REA, Federated Broadband contacted us and said they wanted to meet with us. Well, so an ad hoc committee of the Telecom Commission met with Federated's representatives in December of 2024. After those two meetings, the ad hoc committee was, I think, pretty unanimous in deciding that we were not interested in holding further discussions with Southwest Broadband at that time, but we were interested in holding further discussions with Federated Broadband. And to put it as simply as I can, we liked what we heard from Federated Broadband much more than we liked what we heard from SMBs. And so that started the process with Federated REA and Federated Broadband where information was exchanged and that led us to the point where in July of this year, Federated made a formal presentation to the Telecom Commission seeking to purchase a Wyndham Net. And at that time, the Telecom Commission voted to forward that proposal to the city council. As you're aware, the city council voted to hire an outside consultant to do an evaluation of the Wyndham Net system and placed evaluation on it. I believe that report has been presented to Mr. Nasby. I have not seen the report yet, so I can't comment on it. I don't know if you guys have seen that report either, but that report has been received and further discussions will be held on that report and potentially further discussions with Federated. But we have not tried to keep this a secret. Some of these discussions were at private meetings and there was a portion of time where some of us were under non-disclosure agreements because of the confidential information being exchanged between Wyndham Net and Federated REA. But there was never any intention or thought to withhold information or hide information from the public. When the Federated made their formal presentation to the Telecom Commission, that was made at an open meeting of the Telecom Commission. When Federated made a presentation to the city council, that was in an open meeting of the city council. So we're not trying to hide anything. We're not trying to, you know, run some sneaky maneuver in the middle of the night and keep it from the public. So once again, all I can say is that, I could say a lot of things, but I would probably get into trouble. So I'll just say that in the end, we met with Southwest Broadband, we met with Federated, and we liked what we heard from Federated much more than we liked what we heard from Southwest Broadband. As to what Southwest Broadband is trying to accomplish with this ad, I can't say, I can't read minds. But what I've just told you is from my point of view, from the head of the Telecom Commission, that's what this process has been. So I don't know, if there are any questions on that front, I can try and answer them.
I don't have any questions per se, but I can affirm the facts that you've laid out there. I've been being present at these meetings too.
Did they not ask if they couldn't be the only people talking about it?
Thank you. Very good point. There was a lot of correspondence at one point between Southwest Broadband and the city of Wyndham, to which I was privy. And at one point, Southwest Broadband contacted us and said they were interested in signing, in going forward with further discussions on a potential merger or acquisition. But Southwest Broadband said they wanted Wyndham Net or the Telecom Commission to sign an exclusivity agreement stating that Southwest Broadband would be the only party that we could have discussions with. Basically, they wanted a deal where we could talk to them, but we couldn't talk to anybody else. And we were not inclined to agree with that.
I think at this point, you know, we're not at the point where we're going to definitely solely negotiate with Federated. I mean, the door would still be open to talk to them again. And there's another party that may be interested. So there could be three parties interested in Wyndham Net that would be willing to listen to.
Yeah, no decisions have been made of any kind yet. We have just entered into this process with Federated Broadband to hear their presentation, hear them out and see where it may lead. It may lead somewhere, it may lead nowhere. You know, the status quo may hold where we continue to, the city continues to own and operate Wyndham Net. So we're not at that bridge yet.
I've seen those emails too, Dirk, that you're referring to. And what Dirk is saying is absolutely correct.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
Just one, one more comment, that any of our meetings, most of our meetings are open to the public. Our seats are usually wide open, nobody's sitting in them. So if there's anything that people want to know about, they're more than welcome to come down to our meetings and sit and listen, because we have nothing to hide.
And I have been at most of the telecom meetings too, not all, but most. And can I confirm that it is the third Monday at 6:30? Third Monday of the month at 6:30, right here, open to the public. Anybody can attend. Six, I'm sorry, 6:00 PM, third Monday of the month, council chambers.
And occasionally, we have had some members of the public attend the meetings, not often, but on occasion.
And I'd just like to say, you know, we haven't, as a council, we haven't even said that we are selling telecom. You know, like, I think we're getting the cart in front of the horse here. You know, we heard from a presentation from Federated and then we said, well, let's evaluate and see what we have, what it's worth. You know, we know what kind of debt we have. So we're just in the evaluation phase. And as a council, we have not heard back yet. We do not have that in our possession to know what that's even worth, to know whether this is something we'd even entertain or not. So, you know, for people to fight over who gets to buy, who gets to do what, you know, it's like, we don't even know if we're selling. We don't even know if we have a product that we're putting out there to sell. So people are jumping a little too quickly on this. The other thing is, you know, Federated came around first because they're doing stuff countywide. They were talking with the commissioners. They were dealing there. And so it just was kind of a natural thing to say, okay, we're in your county, we're doing things in your county, and so we want to come and talk with your city as well. So that, I think, is kind of how it led for Federated to start talking with the city is because they were dealing with things within our county. So, you know, I mean, Southwest Broadband's already in our area. And, you know, so I'm just saying, that's kind of how Federated even came about is countywide first. And so.
All right, yeah, just to follow up on that, when Federated got their grants and started building out in Cottonwood County, I believe it was Jeff who originally contacted Federated to see if, hey, if you guys are building out in Cottonwood County, maybe we could provide some services to you. And then they came back with, said, well, maybe we could do more than that. And that's what led us to where we are.
I guess a final wrap up would be, we're at the stage of the valuation and in the coming days, we will have some more information on that. Next meeting, yes.
And but again, at the same time, we have, you know, we have to keep the trains running. So as Jeff mentioned, we're, the Telecom Commission really voted, recently voted to make some pretty significant changes in the Wyndham Net operations because if we continue to own and operate Wyndham Net, we feel that's what we need to do going forward. So, you know, we'll try and get out information to the public on that as best we can. And I certainly, you know, people can call me and I'll tell them what I can. But yeah, the changes Jeff talked about originally with, you know, going to the streaming video and changing, making some changes in our internet packages, those are changes that we feel that we need to make to continue Wyndham Net as a viable operation. So we're planning for the future.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I'll just probably jump in quick. The evaluation came from the consultant last week. I got it on Monday morning. I was off on Friday, so I got it on Monday morning. So my intention is provide it to the city attorney as it is, you know, negotiation proprietary information. It'll go to city attorney, then probably out to you guys for a closed session, discuss, you know, that valuation and ask questions of that. So that's probably going to be on your next agenda.
Well, I would just like to thank you guys for giving us an update on telecom and thank you, Dirk, for explaining your point of view as Telecom Commission Chair. I do appreciate that. I did have some questions about that over the weekend. And I guess what I said, it's business as usual. As far as I'm concerned with telecom, they're carrying on, making updates, finishing migration, there's marketing plans. Again, as far as I'm concerned, no one has any preferential treatment in this. The valuation has just been completed. There has been no sale decisions made. And I think when I went back through emails the last time I was on anything with SMBs was February 21st of 2025. So I don't know where it all came from, but I'm glad that we laid everything out. We are transparent. As far as I know, nothing is happening behind closed doors. I was on the ad hoc committee. And I kind of come in looking for shady stuff wherever I'm at, and I don't find it here. So I just appreciate your update and everyone else doing their best to keep on business as usual.
And I know you've got a lot on the agenda, but just one more quick thing is that on the streaming video, I have been testing that new system at home and I like it a lot. So I think when people get a look at this product, I think they're going to like it.
Anything else?
I was just going to say that I just switched over today personally from my house. My wife has been very happy with it. She's also my best customer, or sometimes not. But she'll let me know if things aren't working on that. But it's been working really good. There's always a learning curve. But, you know, it's comparable to about everything else that everybody's going to on the streaming side. So it's just a natural progression that we need to go for this. We've got about 16 paid customers on the system now, handful of test accounts and things also, but everything's going fairly well. Key thing is always a good internet connection. And if it can be, the 5G connection is preferred and utilize approved devices and you have a good experience.
One more thing, I do have a question here. So just to clarify some dates, November 1st, the marketing was going to roll out, correct? What was the December 12th date?
Okay, by that date, we'd like people to notify us of their decision if they're going to sign up for the streaming service and which internet package they want to be on.
Of course, they're going to have them, you know, if they want to do it right away, that's fine. Don't wait. Because things can get backed up. And if you're going to make that change, let's go ahead and make the change. As we're migrating over the other systems, older system to the new, we'd prefer to also have you switch over to the streaming video service at that time. And we would be able to put the right equipment in.
Wonderful. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this for Dirk or Jeff?
Southwest Broadband, have they been notified that we just assumed they didn't do these things?
Sorry, say that again?
Southwest Broadband, have they been notified that we would just assume they didn't do these things, like putting stuff in the paper?
I don't think we can control what they do.
No, it's, it was a paid advertisement. They could put whatever they want in there. That's their discretion, so.
Anything else from anyone? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads that want to speak now? Okay, moving on. Number three is the 2026 street project, which we'll call for a resolution approving the feasibility study and calling for a public hearing. And we welcome Dan from DGR Engineering. And John?
Make a motion to accept the street project? Oh, sorry about that, yeah.
Good evening. Dan Vinscape with DGR Engineering. Thank you for your introduction there. I submitted this to Steve and he's bringing up the feasibility report for the 2026 street improvements. This report is to meet the criteria for, the assessment criteria for Minnesota statutes 429, in that we are going to evaluate street improvements for First Avenue from Sixth Street to Highway 60, as well as 17th Street from Fourth to Sixth Avenue. These roads were inspected by city staff and as they rate their conditions on a five-year basis to make sure that we're utilizing the funds in the right location for the community to make sure that the dollars the community uses are going to where it's needed the most. The existing surface of these streets is a combination of bituminous overlay and seal coat. The majority of the streets are between 24 and 36 foot. Some of it has back curbs, some of it doesn't, and in all cases are showing significant distress, distress and do not have a smooth ride. Geotech has helped us explore the thickness of the existing pavement, and it varied between three inches to six inches with an average of 4.1. And I'll explain that a little bit more when we talk about different options. Segments of the curb and gutter in poor condition need to be replaced. There are a few areas where the curb and gutter is in fair condition and will be remain in place with, depending on the options that we all choose. The utilities on the street, on First Avenue from 10th to 16th Street, the city utility departments have determined that they need to replace four-inch cast iron water main. And right now, we do not intend on doing any storm sewer except to add service in the block between 12th Street and 16th. On 17th Street, the main impetus for the project is actually to replace the existing four-inch cast iron main, which is showing signs of distress and breaking. So the point of that project is a beginning point is for the utility to be replaced. Moving on to page two, we evaluated three different options on what could be done with these streets. First of all, which is a bituminous reconstruction. In that would be a, on First Avenue would be a 10-ton road, would be a six inches of bituminous pavement over 12 inches of granular base. And on 17th Street would be a typical residential street, would be four inches of bituminous over 12 inches of granular base. These costs can be seen in the appendix and we'll go over that a little later. But on average, would be between $471 to $636 per linear foot of street being replaced. Option 1A, I'm calling it 1A because it's also a bituminous option, but instead of complete reconstruction in areas where it's possible, we evaluated whether you could do a overlay, a mill and overlay. So you'd mill the top of the pavement approximately two inches and then you would replace that two inches of pavement to restore the surface of the pavement, but it wouldn't restore the full depth of the pavement. In that option, the cost ranges from $224 to $471 per foot, depending on some of the options in the curb and gutter that did or didn't need to be replaced. The second option we looked at was concrete reconstructions for each of these segments. For the heavier duty section of First Avenue was seven inches of concrete pavement. And for the residential section was six inches of concrete pavement. For those options, the linear footed, or cost per linear foot would be $645 to $705 per linear foot. As part of the evaluation process, another thing we look at is the life expectancy of the intended product. Option one, the complete reconstruction, the new street would have approximate design life of 20 to 25 years and include cracked ceiling and seal coat every five, or seven to eight years and extend the life. At the end of the life period, because we're doing a four-inch overlay, the intent would be that it could be milled and overlaid to extend that life even further without having a complete reconstruction at that time. Again, we mentioned earlier, some of the existing isn't quite that thick, which is part of the problem as to why we can't have it be a perpetual pavement. So that's why it's kind of important to at least get to four inches. And obviously, on First Avenue, it's the even heavier duty of road, it's going to be six inches. So allowing that to have that life cycle would be important. The existing streets have already been there for well over 25 years. Option 1A, as I mentioned, the overlay, there are areas of that though with that, with the review that are thicker than four inches and potential to be overlaid. That overlay has a design life of approximately seven to 12 years, and it would require the same maintenance and and it would require the same maintenance and crack sealing and seal coating every seven to eight years. The third, option two, excuse me, the concrete reconstruction would give an approximate design life of thirty to thirty five years and it would include cracked ceiling every seven to eight years. Again, same same as all the others and the existing road has been there for more than twenty five years. The next piece that you consider when you're looking at a road reconstruction is the timing of the work. Each construction has a different methodology and how they do the work and how long it takes them to put it back. If you're redoing the base, it obviously takes longer than it does if you're just doing a surface coat. So the bituminous reconstruction option will be closed for local traffic for up to three to six weeks. And that's just while they're doing the paving work, obviously there's some prep work before that and any utility work that would happen potentially. The bituminous rehabilitation project would take about half that time, two to three weeks, just because you're not taking the entire pavement out. So the the timing of that project goes a lot quicker. And then concrete reconstruction takes a little bit longer because you have the cure time. So it takes a little longer to install the pavement in the first place. And then on top of that, you have to wait at least a week before you open it up to traffic. So you're talking a six to eight week period just for the paving process for that. The next piece that we evaluate is the project costs and the financing. First, we're looking at the feasible option is what I'm reporting here is the bituminous reconstruction of First Avenue between Sixth and Sixteenth Street, and I'll go over that a little bit more. And then potentially using a bituminous overlay of First Avenue from Sixteenth Street to Highway sixty to the north. And then Seventeenth Street option would be an overlay as well. So the area where the utilities would be done would be cut out and replaced. And then they would do just an overlay of the remaining pavement, both sides of that, so that you would have a smooth, normal cross section that that you wouldn't be able to tell was patched or anything like that. I have a little bit of bad news, I I have a typo here that four point one two number is wrong. And it's been updated in the spreadsheet, however, it wasn't done here. The hard copy you have in front of you should have it denoted as as incorrect. Good news is however, it's it's the lower number, so we've been evaluating and and going through design. So as we do that, we verify that we have enough pavement and have enough concrete planned in for the removals. So that 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 feasible option is three point nine five two million dollars. And the concrete reconstruction option is five point eight seven seven million dollars. Those are the the two main options. The city plans to finance the project with a combination of bonds and special assessments and the amount that would be specially assessed would be approximately twenty five to thirty three percent of the total project cost. Half of the street improvement costs will be assessed to the property owners. That'll be done by a linear foot dimension of each property face along each side. On side properties in areas where the side of the property is the work area and the frontage or basically where the front door to the businesses or their address would be the front faces away from the project. That would be called a side. On those sides, half of that amount would be actually credited toward the street project. So the the frontage would be obviously the higher priority and be at the higher cost basis. The remaining half of the street improvements that are not assessed, two inches of additional thickness to make it a ten ton road because we would only assess to the four inch thickness. And all intersection improvements are paid for by the city. So finally, we're gonna get to what I came down to for the options and and what we're recommending to move forward with. This is obviously for the council to debate and discuss and I will leave time to talk about all those options after we go through those costs. The existing streets are showing wear and continue to deteriorate. Surface water is ponding and draining through cracks and deteriorating more quickly due to freeze thaw cycles. The existing pavement on First Avenue from Sixth all the way to Sixteenth is in very poor condition and does not have a good base for a good overlay as an option. The First Avenue section north of Sixteenth Street is in moderate shape, meaning it's structurally sound. The existing base is performing as long as it's continued to be protected by from the weather, which means it needs to have a sealed surface. And currently it is deteriorating, however, it's in good enough condition. I think we could save it if we do something at this time. The existing pavement on Seventeenth Street between Fourth and Sixth is also in moderate condition, meaning it's structurally sound and the base is still performing well. And as long as we do maintenance now, it can be maintained to push out for further. So both reconstruction options are feasible alternatives to improving the city streets. Based on the time for constructions, convenience to the public, recent project history and cost assessed of the properties and life expectancy, the more feasible option for the city of Wyndham is the bituminous reconstruction option on First Avenue south of Sixteenth Street, which also includes utilities and the bituminous overlay option on First Avenue north of Sixteenth Street. The bituminous reconstruction overlay option for Seventeenth Street, except for a patch segment, which would be approximately twelve foot wide for the utility, the water utility that needs to be replaced in that segment. Those costs, if you go through the blue cost estimate page, the feasible option, as I mentioned previously, was three point nine five two million dollars. The next page is if you did full reconstruction, bituminous reconstruction on all segments of the project would be four point nine eight nine million. And then the construction op or excuse me, the full concrete option that we were looked at was five point eight seven seven million dollars for those segments. The reason I say it's there is discussion is again, we south of Sixteenth Street, the road doesn't have good drainage to the intakes, there isn't defined paths for the curb and gutter. So we feel it's very important to get those defined paths in order to let allow whatever new pavement you put on. Even if it would be an overlay, there's really no way to direct the water to the stormwater intakes very well at this time. And that's what continues to deteriorate. We kind of had the same conversation, we talked about the alleys and bringing storm sewer into those alleys to make sure that we can get that water away. It's gonna last longer over a longer period of time. And then in the future, you'll have more of an option to do lesser maintenance type of operations, whether it's an overlay or a chip seal or things like that to keep that pavement going for a longer period of time into that twenty five plus year design span. Wanted to pause now and ask if there's questions, comments. Again, that I want to have that as a conversation that that's our recommendation. I think there's other options, complete reconstruction is definitely not a poor option. It's just obviously there's a cost dollar figure to that. And the segments that we've included in the possibility of being overlaid are because those segments are good candidates for such such work. We're not doing utilities and those pavement sections are in better condition. So I'm gonna let you guys mull over that a little and send back any questions you have.
Okay, on First Avenue, you'd you'd be milling that bituminous surface off, right?
So they would mill the surface off to utilize as base?
Utilize it as a base.
Correct.
That's that's important to me that you utilize that material.
It would all get recycled. The way we do that though, to get the best price is we allow the contractor the option to recycle it in the way they choose. So some contractors choose to use it back into the asphalt that they're putting on our street or other streets. They they just take haul it away, utilize it for asphalt mix. Other contractors, if you do a good enough job of milling it, which takes a certain kind of machine, then they would actually use it back in the base, which we're planning on doing twelve inches of base so they can get two or three inches of base material. Free isn't the right word, but they can utilize the material you guys have already put into that street, recycle that material and put it back down as base after they get through with whatever utility work.
That's just important to me that that it gets utilized.
Correct, and contractors have a way to make those dollars work better than if we dictate how they use it. So that's why we try to let them dictate the prices back to us, say that material is yours, it's owned by you and you can reuse it in the project whatever way is the most efficient for your process.
I'm wondering, when I look at these cost options here, does one of these encompass your what you would call the more feasible option? Because it kind of they're like a bituminous reconstruction option, then an overlay option, and then a reconstruction slash overlay option. And I'm just wondering if one of these is?
Excuse me, excuse me, so the headers are a little bit missed, but but the first one is the bituminous option feasible recommendation. So that is the one that as I tried to explain before, but there's a lot of pieces. But it's full reconstruction on First Avenue south of Sixteenth Street. It's a two inch overlay north of Sixteenth Street on First Avenue. And then Seventeenth Street would be an overlay on all the segments except for the utility trench for the water main. So that is why it is a slightly lower or slightly, it's significantly lower cost than the full reconstruction in bituminous is the second page. And then the third page is the concrete option of complete reconstruction. So so the the key word there is the feasible recommendation, which that's what was described in that previous paragraph. So sorry if that was a little hard to read.
No, I missed the feasible recommendation, sorry about that, thank you very much.
John, just a quick question, what do you think?
I like Dan's recommendation, looking at Geotex and everything else, the overlay would work. There's not a lot of heavy traffic out that way, but there is still some. So it'd work, it'd get us down the road for a while and everything else. I still still do like the ten ton road, so I mean GDF's got plenty of truck traffic. Hotkins and everything for Elite would have some heavy traffic down there too. But that road's holding up already for what was in for Shopco and everything else having truck traffic through there, so the base is good. So trying to save the city some money, I think I'd really like to go with Dan's idea too.
Yeah, cuz I know it's up to us to decide what we go, but John, you deal with them every day, day and day, all winter long, all summer long. So I mean, you're on these streets twenty four seven, so that's your recommendation means a lot to me too.
Just to try to save the city some money and everything too, so we got many more road projects that are coming due soon. So we're trying to do as best we can and be fiscally as responsible as we can.
I I think I think your years of life expectancy from this is is real conservative. I I think it'll farly it'll exceed that by far as far with these streets from the the eighties that that five year street program, you know, they're thirty five, they're getting thirty five to forty years old. My God, and they're only less than three inches of mix on those streets, you know? And they served us well, but a street like this, I think, will definitely, I anticipate fifty years, but far beyond me.
I I think we try to be conservative with those numbers. We also try to make it more of a life cycle cost, so you know, after twenty five years, I would hope we are starting to look at potentially doing a mill and overlay. And I hope at that time it is a mill and overlay because we did put the dollars into the base and the and the street in this case. We are evaluating those on each of these projects, so we've we're, you know, that's why we're doing cores each time. And the simple fact is is I don't wanna patch something and then have you come back in five years and just be like, oh, this is not doing well. And honestly, the one time we did do that, it worked out really well so far. We we did a section of Sixth Avenue several years back that was extended by the county at a later time with a one inch overlay and that was to try to get us by and it's well past its five years that I told you at that time. So I I hope you're absolutely right that you're getting many more years out of this, but that's all we're allowed to say in in a report such as this.
I'm not a fan of concrete. The this concrete streets have been put in by the city right now, I don't think, they don't ride good, they're not, they're not look, they don't look that great. I don't, I I think I'd definitely go with bituminous.
And I'm I'm fine with that, concrete's more difficult when you're in. How about now? Alright, sorry about that. Concrete can be done well, it's more difficult in an urban situation frankly, when you have existing neighbors and things like that. The the machines that you use, existing trees, things like that. And then you start doing things with smaller piece of equipment to make do and those smaller piece of equipment are harder to get to ride well. So it just kind of depends on the situation. But I I can definitely understand your your perspective there on that because in an when you're already in a residential area, people have developed trees in their boulevards, it's really hard to get a machine that overhangs five feet both ways and try to pave that thing full width and get a nice smooth road. It's very difficult. Asphalt, you can move the curb and gutter up and down a little bit and then you fix the middle as needed. And and most people don't see and feel those those types of changes versus with concrete, it's definitely a more abrupt change.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, you said in the presentation that this First Avenue went from between twenty four and thirty six feet wide in different sections. Is there any plan on changing the street whiz or anything like that to be more uniform?
So the uniformity south of Sixteenth, excuse me, it's twelfth, south of twelfth, what we plan on replacing with thirty six foot back to back, similar to what's there. Currently, we're not actually even positive if there is or isn't curb there. There there, it's kind of a flattened road section. What we plan on doing is paving it back with full drop curb the whole way, so it'll look like a driveway curb through that entire segment. The area has been utilized that way through, you know, however long it's been in the current situation. And the biggest reason I need I I'm recommending and really want to put curb and gutter in there is so that we get the water off of the asphalt to a gutter and then to the intakes. It's also very flat through that area, so in order to to maintain that longitudinal, that curb and gutter is extremely important. You can you can put grade on curb and gutter significantly flatter than you can on an asphalt surface, make sure we get rid of that water. North of that, we're planning on matching what's there. Right now, you're kind of pushed in between existing business pavements and then at a point you get to where there's the DOT. There's a small swell, I I say ditch, but that's that's probably giving it more credit than it deserves. It's it's maybe only about half a foot to nine inches deep. Will continue to drain there, so everything drains across your pavement into the DOT ditch. We're planning on just maintaining that width that you currently have all the way through there, which is why I mentioned twenty four feet. Because for sure from Sixteenth north, it's twenty four feet, but then between Sixteenth and the park, it varies drastically through there. We don't intend on narrowing up by the park because I think people use that for parking and there's business stuff going across the road. So I guess we intended on putting that back the way it was and then as you go north, it kind of tapers down and gets closer to that twenty four foot. And that's where it's being used as a parking lot for some and goes into the bank parking lot and things like that. So I guess north of there, it's more of a kind of match and see. Seventeenth, we don't intend on replacing the curb except for where we're putting water services in. So again, we're we're planning on maintaining what's there in the widths. But it's more kind of matching the situation versus making it uniform.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dan or John? Alright, do we have anything else to go over in this?
Not from my end, it would just be like I said, if you had any questions or had any strong feelings about a different direction than the feasible option that I've submit that I've suggested.
I agree with your recommendation. I think it's, I think you're right on.
Alright, so then with that, we, if someone would like to introduce a resolution approving the feasibility study and calling for a public hearing.
I'll introduce that resolution.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have an introduction in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Wade.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Alright, thank you for the informative presentation, Dan.
Thank you, very much appreciate you guys. Thank you. Very much appreciate you guys' time. And as we go through this, you'll be seeing more of me.
Thank you so much.
Uh, and so with the public hearing that the council just called for, letters go out to the property owners, that kind of thing. And so it'll be in the second council meeting in December is when that, so that'd be the sixteenth, just so you're aware of that and the public's aware of that. The first meeting of December is our truth and taxation meeting. So it's already a scheduled public hearing. So this would be the second meeting of the month.
Thank you for that update. All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't go too far, John. Looks like John is up next. Street Department, twenty twenty-four tractor loader purchase.
Good evening. Um. You guys kind of gave me permission to maybe purchase a tractor coming up here. Um, did a little talking with one of the businesses in town, and there is a lease return coming in. And they would like us to get some paperwork signed for that to keep this money and everything. There's a two year yeah, base warranty on this machine. Um, and then there's a ten year, one thousand five hundred hour powertrain warranty on it. And uh, we trade the little John Deere tractor in, which would be nine thousand dollars. Um, the dealership fall discount, if we get it signed up and get it taken care of, is ten thousand nine hundred and eight dollars is what we'd be getting back. So a sixty thousand dollar, nine hundred and eight dollar tractor would cost us about forty-one thousand dollars. So I'm trying to see if you guys would give me permission to start the paperwork here and get this thing locked in before it disappears on us.
Well, I'd like to say that we love when our staff come to us and have found a discount, a coupon, a way to save money, a way to trade something in. Um, and so this is definitely what we like to see that um our department heads are always on the lookout for. So I definitely would approve of this and make a motion that we approve the purchase in twenty twenty-four of this tractor loader.
I'll second that. And I'm glad to see it's between zero and ten percent savings.
So yes, beginning of the year, we'll pay for it and everything. So it'll fall on the twenty-six fiscal fiscal end of it. But yeah, we just need to get the paperwork signed and everything to get the discounts and everything else for the holdover stuff.
So there's a motion in a second to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Case I H Farmall fifty C loader tractor. Nice savings of twenty thousand dollars found there, John. And a percentage savings of zero to ten percent. Is there any other discussion on this?
What's the delivery date on it?
As soon as it comes in, it sounds like we can get it and we'll just have to wait for the paperwork and everything else. Um, Fairmont's got it right now. They used it as a little mower tractor. So they had a little flail mower in the back and mowed some of their parks with it. And he's anticipating it coming in here middle of the month. He's thinking there's probably about a hundred hours, hundred and a half hours on it.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John. Next up is Planning Commission, and there are two items for that. The variance application for D V K diversified at seven Cottonwood Lake Boulevard and a conditional use permit for Harry Rodriguez Vasquez at twelve seventy-one Hale Place. Welcome, Matt Fast, to go over these with us.
Matt Fast, Building and Zoning. Uh, D V K diversified LLC submitted a request for a variance of the lowest floor elevation at seven Cottonwood Lake Boulevard in Wyndham. City code section one fifty-two point two two seven A one provides that pursuant to the shoreline classification for Cottonwood Lake, the lowest floor of a structure, including the basement, must be placed at a level at least three feet above the highest known water level or three feet above the ordinary high water level, whichever is higher. Applicant is requesting a variance to construct a single family dwelling in the Shoreland District with the lowest level of the structure three feet above the ordinary high level, high water level of thirteen seventy-one point six feet, as shown on the recorded final plat. Bob Brown of D V K diversified has confirmed that during the flooding in twenty twenty-four, the water level south of the road in the basin did not get above thirteen hundred and seventy-one feet. At the time that the property was platted, the ordinary high water level was thirteen seventy-one point six. However, during the historic flooding in two thousand twenty-four, a new highest known water level for properties within the within the Shoreland District was surveyed by the D N R as thirteen seventy-six point eight seven. To position the lowest floor above the of the new home, three feet above the two thousand twenty-four peak would require an extensive amount of fill and would also raise the level of the home significantly higher than the street, creating a steep driveway. In his email, Tom Cresco, D N R hydrologist, provided the D N R's recommendations. The last recommendation provided that at a minimum required the lowest floor to be at least at or higher than the highest known water level, which is thirteen seventy-six point eight seven. At the meetings on October fourteenth and October twenty-ninth, Mr. Brown stated that D V K would not be able to construct the lowest level at the new highest known water level surveyed in two thousand twenty-four at the as thirteen seventy-six point eight seven, but not able to construct at an additional three feet above that level. D V K diversified is currently working with the Wyndham Building and Zoning Office and the local D N R hydrologist concerning a shoreline impact plan. On October twenty-ninth, the Planning Commission approved a motion to recommend city council approval of the variance application submitted by D V K diversified on the condition that the lowest floor of the home shall be at least at or higher than the highest known water level, which is thirteen seventy-six point eight seven feet. And their recommendation would be to approve the zoning application submitted by D V K, requesting a variance of the lowest floor elevation of the new home on the condition that the lowest floor of the new home shall be at least at or higher than the highest known water level, which is thirteen seventy-six point eight seven feet.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this?
Um, yes, I I I completely understand what's going on. I totally support this as well. Um, they are complying with the professionals, the D N R who come up with this data. And uh, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't pass it anyways, but they have done their part. And they were uh, they were doing it professionally as well. So I appreciate that.
I wouldn't say I perfectly understand this, but I understand it a lot. I've had a lot of conversations with you and been at the meetings. And I think this is a really good compromise for um the other options. And and these figures were a recommendation by the D N R that it would be okay with them. So um, I think it's a a good compromise, but I would like to, I read through the notes and saw that Commissioner Miller would like to have a kind of pushing to make sure that if they're gonna run into this in the other lots, did I read that correct? Yeah, so I appreciated that as well. So anyone else?
Three feet above seems a little excessive to me. Don't we generally go one foot above?
In a mapped floodplain, you use an extra one foot of freeboard. But this is not a map floodplain, so we have the two options, three foot above ordinary high water level or three foot above highest known water level, whichever is higher. And that's out of the D N R's ordinance that we adopt and administer.
Is that gonna mess with anybody's insurance type of thing, far as what they can and can't do?
I don't believe so. I'm trying to think. I believe that if it's not a mapped floodplain, they're not required to have flood insurance. I believe that's, believe that's what I read.
Yeah, cuz I just wanted, there's no sense of building out speaking insurance for it, you know. That's what I'd be following. And there's hopefully a lot more houses gonna have be out there, built out there. But I don't want the next person and the next person have run into this. But yeah, and if you think it's okay, I guess it's good enough for me. I'm not sure. I I think the Strom House is approximately one foot above that right now from what.
Yes, I checked.
That elevation, I think they're about a foot above that, but.
Yeah, yep. The Strom House and also Montgomery's out there. I double-checked them after I got this information, and they are both above the highest known water level. So.
Does anyone else have anything? Any questions or anything?
I guess if if they don't have to have flood insurance, they're not gonna be protected either when it does flood. So it'll be up to them, you know, basically, just like everybody else.
If there are no other questions, then we are looking for a motion to approve the variance application from the D V K diversified on the condition that the lowest floor of the home shall be at least at or higher than the highest known water level, which is one three seven six point eight seven.
I would make that motion you just fully explicated.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and has a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the conditional use permit for Harry Rodriguez Vasquez at twelve seventy-one Hale Place.
The applicant filed a zoning application requesting a conditional use permit to allow placement of an impound lot on property at twelve seventy-one Hale Place, which he intends to purchase from Carl Borkland Junior Estate. The Cole personal representative signed consents to the application for this use. The Bjorkland property is owned as I one light industrial. Pursuant to city code section one fifty-two point one five two D, an impound lot for storage of inoperable vehicles, vehicle wrecking, is allowed as a conditional use in the I one district. City code section one fifty-two point four seven seven sets forth the city code requirements regarding an impound lot. Attachment is an aerial of the area proposed for the impound lot. The impound lot will be located behind or north of the building. Mr. Rodriguez is proposing a six foot tall vinyl fence completely around the impound lot. So it will be close in vision, and there will be lock gates in the fence. There's an existing light in the property that will be enclosed by the fence. Mr. Rodriguez stated that he will leave space around the light to allow access by the electrical department to maintain and repair the light. He will also provide a key for the gate in the fence to Electrical Superintendent Jason Socora. There's a utility easement on portion of the property where the impound lot will be situated that is basically used for electrical purposes. Electrical Superintendent Jason Socora has indicated that he has no objections to the proposed use of this area for an impound lot. Superintendent Socora advised that because there are electrical lines in that area, the electrical department will take the tops off the trees that Mr. Rodriguez wants to remove from the property. Mr. Rodriguez will then be able to remove the remainder of the trees. Based on the information provided by Mr. Rodriguez and my discussions with him concerning this project, all of the proposed conditions will be met. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. And unanimously approved a motion to recommend city council approval of the application for a conditional use permit submitted by Harry Rodriguez Vasquez to allow an impound lot on the property described as parcel number two five dash eight two one dash zero zero three zero and parcel number two five dash one three one dash zero zero one zero, except the westerly forty-two feet of parcel number two five dash one three one dash zero zero one zero. This westerly forty-two feet is included in a gravel access owned by the city of Wyndham and shall not be used as an impound lot or blocked by vehicles. The recommended conditions for this, the recommended conditions for approval of this conditional use permit are as follows. One, the entire impound lot shall be fenced and secure. Two, the applicant shall install a six foot solid fence around the entire impound lot. Three, all of the fencing surrounding the impound lot shall be installed within ninety days of approval of the conditional use permit, weather permitting. Four, storage of inoperable inoperable vehicles shall be permitted only as temporary storage for the time period required to conclude any insurance or legal proceedings or disposal arrangements in connection with each specific vehicle. Five, no scrapping, dismantling, or salvage of vehicles or vehicle parts shall be allowed on the property. Six, the impound lot shall be kept in a neat and orderly condition. And seven, the applicant shall provide means of access to the electrical department for maintenance and repair of a light that will remain in the impound lot area and be enclosed inside the fence. The minutes from the October twenty-ninth meeting set forth a discussion, motion, and findings of fact concerning the Pla- Planning's Commission recommendation to approve this conditional use permit application. And our recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permit application submitted by Harry Rodriguez Vasquez of River Towing to allow placement of an impound lot on the former Carl's Repair Property located in I one light industrial district.
I'll make a motion to to approve the conditional use for Harry under the twelve seventy-one Hale Place.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit at twelve seventy-one Harry Hale Place, excuse me, submitted by Harry Rodriguez Vasquez. Is there any further discussion on this? With the conditions.
Yes, with the condition he mentally don't, yes.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a resolution calling for a public hearing miscellaneous special assessments. And I will pass this to Steve to have this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope we can catch up a little on our agenda. Um, this should be pretty straightforward. Uh, once a year, we do the miscellaneous special assessments. These are things like uh yards that get mowed that we have to go in and do. Um, we do bill that back to the property owners. It could be snow removal on the sidewalk, could be a fire call, those kinds of things. And as you can see in the resolution, we have about fifty-one hundred dollars worth. Um, they would be um assessed to the properties um for a period of one year and then at five percent. And so those would be the terms of that assessment to those properties.
Does anyone have any questions on that one?
You said for one year, Steve, uh, what happens after that?
So because they get added to the taxes, then they'd be in tax default, and then I would go to the county assessor and auditor to pursue.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second it.
The resolution has been introduced and has a second. Um, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
All right, we are catching up here. Next, we are on to a resolution designating an annual polling place. Um, this has to be set annually for elections, and our polling place is the Wyndham Community Center at seventeen fifty Cottonwood Lake Drive in Wyndham. Um, it is a designated polling place for all city of Wyndham precincts and remains unchanged. So if there are no questions, we will take an introduction to the resolution.
I'll introduce this resolution to designate the annual polling place.
The resolution has been introduced and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
I just did that one. Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Do you need a break to catch up your notes? Next up is another resolution, Minnesota Department of Transportation, a grant agreement on the taxi lane widening. I will let Steve take this.
Thank you. So as part of our capital improvement plan for the Wyndham Airport, we've got some taxiway project. We've got some pavement, aprons, things like that that need to be completed. There is three funding sources on this project. It's ninety five percent federally funded five and then the five remaining five percent is split between Minnesota State of Minnesota and the city of Wyndham. So our share of this is five thousand three hundred and sixty two dollars. We're requesting that this be approved for us to enter into the grant agreement for the state portion of this project. We've already approved the federal portion. This would be the state funding for this portion of the project.
And I will abstain from this, jeans and the manager.
I'll introduce this resolution for the Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement as pertaining the taxi lane widening.
I'll second. The resolution has been introduced and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson. Yep, Sherman.
Yes.
Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda is the power sale agreement, Central Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. I believe we'll hear from Jason Sakura on this.
Jason Sakura, Electric Utility Manager. Before you, we have a power purchase agreement. This was brought to us by Compass, which is our power. Not necessarily supplier, but they purchased, they find us agreements on power purchasing. And they they were contacted by this Bigam Lake Wind Farm, fifteen megawatts. Of that, we were initially offered two point two megawatts. At the time, we were going through passing on a couple of our other agreements that we did not know, which was our N C two and our W P. Since then, those agreements have passed through and we no longer have those contracts. So what we have here is a one megawatt P P A, which a P P A is we only purchase the power that the wind turbines produce, so they're not guaranteeing us any certain amounts. So if they're spinning, we get power. If they're not spinning, we get nothing. Also included is capacity, which is a very valuable commodity. And we also get the recs, which help us meet our goal with the with the state's carbon free and renewable standards. So it would be staff and the utility commissions. Recommendation to accept this agreement. City attorney has looked at the agreement and found nothing, nothing, nothing wrong with it, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the power sale agreement for Central Municipal Power Agency.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. And I think you're probably gonna just stay up here for the next contractor payment. First one up that is Electric Generation Plant Project, final payment of a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. So we have the final payment on the gener- generation plant. Took a little while. The general had to secure his I C one thirty fours. He had a couple that were a little tricky, but he did get them all. So our final payment. Scrolling through here. Sorry. On the screen. Yeah. Yes, the the payment is a hundred thousand dollar even. So the final payment will be a hundred thousand dollars even. What I was looking for was the subtraction on the on the payment. So we did come in under under budget. There's, I found the page. You got the page now too. We did come in under budget. We did not use, we only used about four thousand dollars of the contingency money. So we did have a deduct from the original contract price. So our final price on this generation plant will be the five million three hundred and sixty seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty eight cents. And the remainder due is that hundred thousand dollars for the final payment.
I'll make a motion to accept the final payment, a hundred thousand dollars for the electric generation plant project.
Second.
Motion is made and second to approve the final payment of a hundred thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next for contractor payment, Airport Taxi Lane Widening Project.
Yep, and I I can discuss this one too. So we talked about taxi line earlier. We had taxi way widening project that we did with Savota Excavating. As you can see, the contractor amount of this contract was one hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and seventy five. The work out there has been completed. The request for this payment is one hundred and fifty nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, which is the contract less the retainage. Once that is done, then the final payment will be coming through after the engineers finalize this project. The engineers are signing off and recommending the payment as I believe the airport manager and I are recommending improvement. They did a nice job on the work and were quick getting it done and looks nice.
It's all, it's all completed and seeded and everything else. Grass is actually starting to grow out there, but so, yeah. It really looks nice out there. And I will abstain from this vote also.
Do we have a motion to approve the Airport Taxi Lane Widening Project payment for a hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars and fifty cents?
I'll second.
Motion is made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, twenty twenty five Alley Project Pay Request Number Two for two hundred and forty two thousand three hundred dollars and eighty three cents.
Mister Katzenberg will make his way.
Good evening again. Little heads up on the alley. They were supposed to be in here paving today. There's some logistic problems, so it sounds like they're gonna be starting working on that tomorrow. So, yes, they're requesting a payment of two hundred and forty two thousand three hundred and eighty three cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the two hundred and forty two thousand three hundred and eighty three cents for the alley project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve pay request number two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you guys again. Have a good night.
You too. Next up, new business. Does anyone have anything for new business? Hearing none. Next up, old business. Does anyone have anything for old business? I think so too. Nothing? All right. Up next is council comments. Does anyone volunteer to start if they have anything?
I'll always say something, but yeah. Again, with everything that goes on down there, our job is to try to take care of the city of Wyndham. We try to do the best we can and we try to keep everything on the out and out, what we can do in front of everybody. We don't try to hide anything that we can't cuz I'm not a hiding person. I'm pretty much this is what you got and this is what you get type of person. So if there's any questions you guys wanna ask any one of us, we're all in the book. We're in on persus, wherever you wanna see us, go ahead and talk to us. But on the second note, we are citizens of Wyndham, so we all take care of citizens of Wyndham. So if you see your neighbors or a little child or a kid or adult without a jacket out there now that it's getting colder out or winter boots or something like that, if you got an extra pair, please give an extra pair. It's it's just that time of year, you gotta take care of humans and people and pets cuz dogs and cats and stuff like that, they're out there getting cold too and stuff like that. So just take care of each other. That's what we do best in Wyndham. We take care of Wyndham. So I appreciate everything everybody does. And I hope that we are doing the job that you guys want us to do. And our staff is doing this, the jobs that we want them to do. And and the, all the departments that we have in Wyndham take care of Wyndham. So I believe we're doing a pretty good job. But with that, I thank you guys for your belief and your, all your people that stand behind us. So thank you for that.
I just have a reminder that on Saturday, November fifteenth, is the Wyndham Area Health Turkey Trot that morning. So if you are participating or if you're not a participant and just wanna go out and see Turkey's trot down Wyndham, we have some road closures. It's from the high school up and then down Nineteenth Street. And then in front of, I call it the old wind fair, down to the courthouse square and then back out to the school. So if you can participate, get in touch with Wyndham Area Health for the Turkey Trot. Otherwise, you can definitely be a Turkey Trotter supporter, cheerer, honor person and be out there on the morning of November fifteenth. Hopefully, it'll be good weather.
Gentlemen, have any of you got anything?
Yeah, I wanna watch the veterans. The veterans, you know, without you, we wouldn't be here. And I just, I really appreciate all of you, including the firefighters and policemen and even some of the supervisors back there. So anyway, that's all I have.
I also wanted to mention the veterans. We're obviously having veterans programs all around. And it's one of my favorites throughout the years, just hearing from people who actually did the job and protected us and helped to fight for our freedoms.
Not to take people away from Jenny's Turkey Trot, but on November fourteenth, the wine tasting event is at the community center. So please attend that if you're so inclined. And it's a nice event with, at the community center with the Wyndham Liquor Store lining up all the vendors. And so I believe you've been there as well before, so can attest to the good time.
Yes, it is a very good time at the community center at the wine tasting. And I also believe they have some other spirits or things that are tasting as well as wine. Just, I'm a wine person, but there are other things to taste besides wine at the event. And what a good way to do that in the evening and then get up the next morning and go do a Turkey Trot. And at the end of the Turkey Trot, there's turkey legs. I mean, that is the real reason for joining the Turkey Trot.
I would like to remind the public that there are several food drives going on right now. You can check the Citizen tomorrow. I believe Ron was gonna put an editorial in because he asked me to find out where all of the food drives were. And there is also, as part of the wine tasting, I think you get a discount on the admission if you bring a donation for the sharing center, I'm pretty sure. I saw that in marketing today. I'll have to double check that. I'm nearly certain. So check the editorial. Can I confirm that city offices are all closed on Veterans Day? Which is next Tuesday, November eleventh. City offices will be closed. One thing I forgot to touch on, but that I did notice yesterday when I found what I think is an Ice Age bison tooth down at the river is that there are barricades up there. So Island Park can we confirm is closed for the time being? There is some construction going on with the shelter? Are you not clo-? No, you can't drive through there because there are barricades up. But you, I called you because I saw barricades and you welcomed foot traffic. Correct. And if you're listening from at home, what you're not hearing is that there are barricades up because someone drove through the newly seeded grass on the west side of the newly paved road. But there are also contractors working, so it's best to have vehicles out, but foot traffic is welcomed. I was just there. It's, it was nice now that it's gonna get cold. And I think the only other thing I wanted to add is I was gonna get regular about this. Please spay and neuter your pets. I have more rescue kittens or adopt a cat. I think that's all. If no one has anything else, we will adjourn the meeting by unanimous consent.